This is, my name is the planning commission and the commission is comprised of seven members. We have six members tonight at this point and so we do have a call. I'll do a roll call. Mark Powell?
Here.
Mike Keats?
Here.
Noah Subey is not here yet. Nancy Ferrano, here. Michael McPartlin?
Here.
And Loes Hall?
Here.
Our first item on the agenda is a call to the public and it is for anything that's not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak for the first item on the agenda, then you don't need to. You'll get an opportunity to speak during that agenda item. Otherwise, if you have something you'd like us to hear that is not related to that agenda item, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item number one. Do you want me to read this or do you?
If you want to do the introduction, that would be fine.
Okay. This is a public hearing to consider an application for transfer of property. And we can, we will discuss it and make a recommendation possibly to the mayor and council since they're the final decision makers on this.
Okay. Chair and the planning commission, tonight before you is a reconsideration of a request for transfer of city property. If you recall, this was before you on May 17th of 2018. At the time, at that time, the commission did deliberate this and did make a recommendation to the town council. It has been sent back to the planning commission based on a finding. And I did want to start off, I've got several exhibits here, but let me see if I can, I'll use my little pointer here. So if you recall, this is the parcel that is city-owned. It's approximately 15 by 32 feet long. The recent sale of this home here, it was owned by this property owner, but the recent sale of this caused this parcel to be landlocked. This parcel is also owned by this property owner. So had that entire piece actually transferred over, that would have created a situation where this property owner would have not had direct access to Laundery Hill. So the new proposal is for a reduced piece of that property. It's now 15, still 15 wide, but only 22 feet deep. But that allows still for this property owner here to be able to have direct access onto Laundery Hill Street. So let me move forward and I've got a couple of other. So here's an aerial again, just to kind of, this was actually based, and I found an aerial from 10 years ago, just to see if we can see some history on the actual property. But again, you can see the parcel, that is the city-owned parcel there. You can see at that point it was used for parking. And again, here's the parcel next to it that would have been landlocked had they moved the whole piece to the requesting applicant. Next part of our slide here. And I've got a couple of areas. If you recall, these are some of the same ones that were presented back and made, but I've done a little bit of touching up on these just to kind of, for the sake of showing you there. So applicant's parcels are here. Here's the entire piece, but I've now shaded the area that the city would retain. And again, this would be part of the request. Of course, there's the parcel here, it's kind of hard for them to shade it, but that would still allow you to come out and back out onto that parcel there. The next exhibit here is, I took the previous photo and again, I did update this a little bit with more information. So based on the aerial photographs, I feel like this is pretty accurate, but again, the Laundery Hill Street right away kind of comes in narrow here. Smith, Rodney Smith owns this property here. On this side, we have the Humphreys. And approximately, I'd say the property probably goes about there, maybe another. So again, it's narrow coming in here. This is obviously the parcel that's being, the entire parcel, but this is the piece that would be left behind. And again, this is just showing, I feel like it's pretty accurate. I know basically the aerial does sit north of that staircase. And based on the aerial, when this accessory building was here, it did sit slightly in front of that. So I feel like this is a pretty good representation of what the right way looks like now. So hopefully this is helpful to the commission. And again, we can certainly come back to this photo. Let me just continue. And again, here's another perspective looking the other direction, but again, gives you an idea of what the parcel looks like. Of course, the applicant's property is here and then the other properties that are along Laundery Hill. And most of the available parking, again, this piece falls on Mr. Smith. Rodney Smith owns this piece here. And this, there's a little parking space here if you've been up there. Again, that's, this parking as well as this parcel is all owned by this property owner right here. So as far as available, most of the parking is spoken for along Laundery Hill here. So just wanted to point out, of course, this drops down a little. So there's no vehicular access available down here, but this does drop off here. There is a staircase that drops down to the property. So based on the reason for the application, Mr. Sky, as he did previously, was requesting the particular parcel to establish parking for his, the residential structure that's currently under construction. As I mentioned, it did go before this body in May and he'd make a recommendation. Of course, it's back because of the new finding. So then I touched on the recent sale of that home at 19th Ave would have landlocked. I'm sorry, 19, yeah, 19th Ave would have landlocked the property at 17th Ave. And I just wanted to also mention too, there was some question about the addressing on this and I did explain, I think Mr. Laird had questioned, I know that our GI system had shown some addresses that were in conflict with what they show for their particular property. But I think the point is, the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, there was, there's a reason that this is brought back because it was going to deny access. And we'll certainly sort through those addressing issues. And I did tell Mr. Laird that we were looking at that with the city as well as the 911 coordinator to make sure we're all in the same page on the address and proper address and for those parcels. So the city parcel has been historically used as a parking area. And again, when you looked at that photo from 10 years ago, you can see that that was used as parking. It's approximately 400 square feet. So again, part of the analysis would be looking at what purposes would that parcel serve the city if it were to continue to be held onto. Again, it's a rather small piece. It would likely not be used for open space or be developed for other than parking because it traditionally has been parking and it lies between two areas that have been used for parking in the past. And again, I did include that the memo, when it went before the previous public works director, he didn't see any reason why the city couldn't offer that up for sale. Again, it certainly didn't serve any purpose of it for parking. As far as public comments, the property was posted, all of the property owners within 300 feet of the site were notified. And to date, written comments and opposition requests were received from Mr. Laird. Those were provided to you within your packet and of course, his family does own a home right adjacent to this requested parcel. So when looking at, and I also included parking regulations because again, when we look at what the code requires, and I stated here, one parking space for a dual unit is less than a thousand, a minimum of two. It's over, it's more than a thousand square feet. Two space per unit, for each dual unit, more than a thousand square feet is what I'm trying to say. So there was in November of 2017, the council did adopt, there was an amendment which basically says, and it's here, I won't read it verbatim, but new construction in the historic district, again, the parking could be waived if it's deemed that it's not feasible for parking. And again, but having said that, certainly, you know, looking at the options, we realized that a structure would need to have some available parking. So again, this is certainly a feasible option, we'll look at this request. But again, based on that, text amendment that the city council had approved, that they did basically suspend the requirement if it's not feasible. Property valuation, so I had contacted, previously what the city has been doing is really looking at comparables for property. I contacted the local Realtor and just solicited the professional opinion. They quoted that that property on Laundery Hill, anywhere from $2.50 to $3.00 per square foot. So based on that, the recommendation would be to send a favorable recommendation to the mayor and council for the transfer of a 15 wide by 22 foot long portion of APN 10361-179A to the applicant with a minimum bid of $990 or $3.00 per square foot. So I would be happy to answer any questions. We've got the exhibits here, if anybody wants to ask for any further explanation on this. Given the applicant's presence, you can address any questions other than the question.
Any members of the commission have questions for Mr. Sky? Then this is the time for the applicant to make his conclusion.
Hello. My name is John Sky. I'm the owner of 429D Laundery Hill. We went in, we pretty much went through all this, as you remember, but then there was a sale of the property from the Humphreys there that would have changed the dynamic. So they literally would have been landlocking themselves. So basically what we did is we figured out how to revise the situation so, you know, no one gets cut out. Because if you remember in the beginning, I didn't want to get cut out. So I didn't want to do that to anybody else. I'm sure you guys remember the, I don't need to read this, the procedure of the transfer of city property, you guys remember that? Okay. It's pretty cut and dry. You guys already approved it, but then we found a reason that we needed to come back and revise the situation and it's pretty simple. So is there any questions?
Anybody on the commission have a question for Mr. Sky? Right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
What happens next is that our public hearing is open and we receive public comments. Once everyone who decides to speak is spoken, we close the public hearing and the applicant will have an opportunity at that time to respond. I don't have any names, but I'm assuming...
Could I say one little thing?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'll go grab the sign sheet.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm totally unprepared. I figured, you know, we've all been through this. But I just wanted to let everybody know that every single house on Laundery Hill has its own parking. Some people have, lawyers have their personal garage. Everyone has one or more spots. Most places have three parking spaces. So the only house that doesn't have parking is 429D Laundery Hill. Historically, that's been its parking spot since the house was built in 1906. And what else would they give us here? Yeah, that's it. There was a lot of property swaps. I put it in the last packet for you guys so you could see, because all the neighbors got together and they divvied up all the parking except for the lady that owned my house. She was a little mentally unstable, so no one had to deal with her. So that's the only reason that that property is not attached already. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, we will, I will declare a public hearing open. I would like to say, just interject, that what we're dealing here with solely is the issue of whether or not it's appropriate for this piece of property to be recommended to be sold, but we have to recommend to the city council. The first person on the list is Mr. Armstrong?
Hello, I'm Richard Armstrong. I actually might place a line with Mr. Laird and I'll swap with him.
That's fine. I'll let you two come up here and speak and give your name and address. Thank you.
Thanks. Before we get started, Paul, I was wondering, do you have this image showing the current structure, the new house, Mr. Sky's house?
Not the new structure. I do have this, I included this, but that doesn't really do so much good, right?
Okay.
It works a little.
Okay, thanks.
No, I can leave that up there, I just...
No, that's fine. You can go back, if you could go back to the one that you originally used. The point I wanted to make about it is simply that the new structure is much further toward us, toward the bottom of this photograph than that. That was the old, the small house that was on this lodge. It's much further back away from us, okay? First of all, the exception that needs to be met is that parking isn't feasible. And parking, in fact, was feasible at the outset in doing addition to this structure. So Mr. Sky determined to build north. And as a result of that, he built on top of the land that could have been used for parking. That was done without any site plan being submitted that showed parking. So by not submitting a required site plan and then, you know, applying to build onto the south, but then building onto the north, Mr. Sky's built onto part of this property that was available for his parking spaces. My family's owned their house up there, our house up there, since 1992. These lots have, this space has never been used by the former owner of that house since 92 for parking. That's simply not the case. She didn't drive, I don't know how long it depends since she drove, but certainly I can too. In addition to that, this is a really, really tight area. And you can't see the whole thing here, but Paul did a good job, I think, of showing the surrounding properties. This has in fact been used as parking, but it's been used as parking for visitors to the area, people coming to all the different properties there. And as the result of what's being built, and these are turned into dedicated for Mr. Sky only parking spaces, things are just going to be tighter and it's going to be more difficult. Our garage is kind of up here off of this photograph. You can't see on these photographs how severe the angle is coming down. You know, you go up Laundery Hill Road and then you go down the last stretch of it and it's a very, very steep drop into this end of the road. What happens is people constantly, they often back up onto the path of our garage. And in fact, we have many dents in our garage from over time, people trying to do that. People trying to get out of there is going to get more difficult. If these spaces that have been used communally by the whole neighborhood become solely Mr. Sky's property. And I guess the other thing I'd add is that if you look at the blue car, the sole fire hydrant for Laundery Hill is on the other side of that blue car, okay? So Mr. Sky has now built this huge house that comes way, way out. And that fire hydrant is effectively buried between two structures now. It's a concern simply about emergency vehicles and where will they park? Where will they get access, be able to go and get access to that fire hydrant? So that also was about the whole neighborhood. It's not just about one home or one family up there. And so for those reasons, I really strongly think that you should reject this request and revise the mayor and council's. Thank you.
Mr. Laird?
Yeah?
Sorry. I'm pretty familiar with this. I had, just parked up here quite a bit to visit somebody. Where exactly would somebody park if John wasn't building his house further up north? In that photograph right there, at the end of the blue section, where would somebody have parked if John, if that, if the footprint were put in the same place?
Sure. That trailer, that's a trailer there.
And he's being serious about the carriage?
Sir.
And this is his turn.
I can answer. Okay. So just further up in the photograph, beyond the blue, which is where his property starts. That shed is no longer there. The chair is no longer there. That area could have been incorporated and should have been incorporated in the site plan as the parking for the home on that lot. Instead, Mr. Sky built to the north on that area and put the home there where parking could have been laid out. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Armstrong, did you want to speak now?
Yes, I will. I apologize for my interruption. That was very rude of me and I... My name is Richard Armstrong. I live at 29E Laundery Hill. If you head about maybe 60 yards back up towards the photographer here in this photograph, that's where my house is. I want to complain to city staff about using that photograph to show the current situation up on Laundery Hill. That is an absolute misrepresentation of what's going on with that parking space that the applicant is requesting. And that's not a shot I did, but it could go and get a recent photograph. That's, anyway. I will reiterate what I said last time I was here. I believe if you sold this property to Mr. Sky, if the city did, at the price quoted, that would be an unlawful gift to public property and I'll just leave it at that. Regarding any historical claim, if Mr. Sky had followed his original plan and built his new, absolutely new, non-historical, the lot has been scraped, structure on the foundation of the shack, jack that is in that picture down there, he would have parking because he now owned, he bought from Rodney Smith, the lot with the trailer and all that junk. That's where his parking is. And in the DRB process, he started with a structure that went south and then during several continuances, he came back with a structure that was built on that land that he had bought within the last year and he could be parking on today. Except now it has a new structure that he chose to go forward with, with no on-street parking whatsoever. He gambled and lost. And that's what we're looking at here. Giving him that parking would absolutely harm the neighbors down there. The fire plug that Mr. Laird was referring is back behind that tree, back in the corner. The fire department has to be able to get back there to get to the fire club. That affects me directly. And that needs to be kept open for the fire department at all times, the land that's in question. 15 by 22 is not enough. There is now a two-unit, probably four-bedroom, I've never been inside, 2,000 square foot development at the end of that blue rectangle there. 15 by 22, what kind of parking is that? This never should have been permitted to happen. There is a disaster of municipal governance going on right there. That's a photograph of it 10 years ago. And I would urge this committee not to recommend sale, but if there is to be a sale, there be a public auction and the city get its value for that piece of dirt that admittedly Mr. Sky has created with his brand-new, non-historical development on bare flat ground. And that room is absolutely critical to people maneuvering. Even with Mr. Sky's construction, there are pickup trucks reversing up and down Laundery Hill all day because he can't maneuver down there just with a pickup or two down there. It is incredibly tight parking and everyone needs that space to maneuver, in and out. And it would be a miscarriage of justice for this committee to recommend the sale of that parcel, that part of that parcel to Mr. Sky. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Armstrong?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bonnie Williams?
Good evening, Bonnie Williams. I live at 507 D and E Baileyville, which is right below this street. So I really don't drive that road. I don't have any parking issues with this whole project, but my concern is that fire club, because that's my protection. And it's hidden between two homes so tightly now, you know, it's just scary to think that, you know. So I think I would recommend that whole area be designated, no parking for anybody. And it was my understanding, you have to kind of see 15 feet clear of a fire club, right? Most cities, anyway. I don't know what city co-owns here, but that's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Roger Statchell, please?
Good evening. My name is Bob Statchell. I'm the attorney for the Humphreys. The Humphreys are their properties to the left, the blue car is. I would echo one thing. That photo does not do justice of what the current condition of Laundery Hill is or what happens. I presented you a copy of the current photo, or somewhat current. Could you pass that to the commissioners, please, so they can have a chance to look at it? The importance of this particular issue rests not just with the idea that this might be somehow unfair to the Humphreys because they might be landlocked, or even the theory that the city could eliminate the red zone and therefore they could squeeze into that property because that's not what it looks like. It's not the current condition of the property. The other issue is this, and I want you to kind of take this back to when you were being trained by your parents and the concept was, don't paint yourself into a corner. In this particular instance, that's exactly what Mr. Sky has done. He has painted himself into a corner. Rather than put together a house that could put a garage at the end of that blue strip where he could simply pull in and park, he decided to build an entire new two-story structure, all livable square feet, and then use that and then hope that he could come before you today and say, give me that as parking. I need that to be my property. That's a hope and a prayer. That's painting yourself into a corner. The problem here is this, the Humphreys, even with, and unfortunately, that's why I'm glad you're back to photo, you can't make this red square work. It doesn't work. And this is where the city is about to box itself into a corner. And that is, if you do this, you will diminish the Humphreys' value of their property. And if you do that, you've now created a new plaintiff and a new defendant, which is why I'm here. Under Arizona law, 2014 Supreme Court case, if the city exercises its power and diminishes another person's value by depriving them of a good access to roadways, the city is responsible for the loss of the value. We're not talking $2 to $3 a square foot for dirt. We're talking about somebody having to park elsewhere. You tell me, in your own mind, does that diminish that value? Yes. And trust me, we would have plenty of experts to say that could be tens of thousands of dollars in loss. I don't want the commission to make this decision based on the idea that we're helping out a guy who painted himself into a corner. And oh, by the way, the property still in construction. If he was to redesign it and put a garage there where he can pull straight through, that's still acceptable. He can still do that. But that's his choice. This is not the situation where the commission and the city council all come together to help a guy who painted himself in a corner. That's not the right move. And it could be an expensive move. That's the problem. I provided the photo so you could see the dramatic difference between this. And if you haven't, I'm sure some of you may have actually gone up there, looked at it and saw it, so you have the general idea of what you're looking at anyway. But the photo that you're seeing up there and the photo I brought are night and day. This is what people do when they rely on government to know that there's a public road someplace, so they build and design their houses to accommodate that public access. someplace, so they build and design their houses to accommodate that public access, which is exactly what the Humphreys did, exactly what the Lairds have done and other homeowners in the area have done. So to right now say, we're going to scrap that plan and sell this to him and everybody else can fend for themselves, that's where the problem ensues. In this instance, this matter should be sent back to Mr. Laird, or to Mr. Sky, and said, make the change on your own. The property stays as it is. Sometimes the status quo is the right move. Thank you. If you have any questions, may I ask?
I have two questions. You stated that, as a fact, that the blue car has no access to the public right-of-way. On what do you base that statement?
Well, you just said from the, if I understand the staff's correct, their statement was, they've taken a thirty-foot stretch and made it twenty-two. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, we hit the arrow right here. Yeah, so thirty-two, and I know the way it projects it may lie, you know, again, but...
Let's just say this, that's not to scale.
Yeah. But again, this photo was used because it was clear of any obstruction.
Do we have a current aerial photo? Or are we all going back to twenty-one?
Google, yeah, there's, let me show you what we got here for...
My question is, does the red parcel provide adequate access to the public right-of-way for the blue car? That's my question.
Do they have any ingress and egress? Is that a question? That's a question for staff, right? You're asking us?
Well, let's...
Well, you made the statement.
I made the statement, yeah.
You made the statement, so I addressed it to you.
So there, so let's look at, okay, let's get my arrow here. So that strip is basically the same dimensions, right? So this is the Humphreys, right? So it basically has the same dimensions as this. What I was saying is, you're coming and you're doing this.
Okay, so that's an eight-foot, if I understand, that's an eight-foot end, okay? And you're suggesting that they make a turn into their property on an eight-foot slope and then turn then south to get into their property?
They all have legal access. I mean, there's not like a barrier here that prevents them from coming out like this. What I'm saying is, there is legal access.
I agree that there's legal access. Is there physical access?
This picture, the show, the pictures there are, it's like, this car shows like it gets in there just fine.
Right. Because it's actually partially on the public access.
The car or the...
The truck is, the truck is nowhere on, it's halfway on the public access. It's halfway on this Steel Smith property. Okay? If you bring that thing all the way over, there's no access at all. There's no way you make that turn. And here's the point I'm trying to make. The way this property was sold and developed prior to the Sky issue is, this was sold so the Humphreys could maintain their parking spot against their property. They retained that. They sold nineteen F, retained seventeen F, and that little rectangle next to the blue. That was for their parking. But of course, they were also accessing the public right-of-way, the road, to get into that. You just can't make that turn, guys. You can't do it. Now, I might be happy to give you alternatives. Alternatives might be, if you want to try and sell it to Mr. Sky, then he's going to have to give up easement rights. He's going to have to give up rights to access, which means he can't park in certain parts of it if it deprives them the ability to get to their property. That's reasonable. That's a compromise. But it's not right for today, because you haven't even calculated out what kind of footage would be necessary. I mean, you're looking at, and I'm not picking on staff, I do everything I can to work on it, but you're looking at Xs and Os on property that isn't surveyed. You don't have pens. This group can actually go and actually look at pens and see that.
If I may?
Sure.
I have one other question, and I really don't want to argue a point. I'm just trying to get some clarity in my own mind. The second question I have is, you made the statement that Mr. Sky could build a garage on the, I'm going to call it southernmost portion of that blue spot there, which is his property. Is that correct?
No, the blue property is not his, but yes, I understand.
Right, right there. So you're suggesting that he could build a garage there on that, next to that red line, and he would have adequate parking? But I've heard from other voices that that blue section is, has been used for parking by visitors to the area. It could be used by anyone in the neighborhood continuously for parking, which would landlock, technically landlock Mr. Sky if there was a vehicle or a truck or something parked in that blue area. He would technically be landlocked, even if he had a garage too, because he couldn't access that property.
So what you're saying is, is it city parking or is it city roadway?
I don't know what it is.
It's city roadway.
I'm trying to get it clear in my mind how a garage with the adequate parking for Mr. Sky, that big blue parcel was available for parking or public access.
Right. But you're saying...
So I could park there, let the state there all day long, and he would technically have no access to his garage because...
I think you're actually saying that correct, like a lot of city streets in Bisbee, Old Bisbee, Warren, other areas, some of the thought going into where people would access and other accesses were lost.
He would be the only person on that flat right there who would not have access to his parking.
He has direct access.
He would not have if there was a vehicle parked in that space, that blue space.
And that's the question. Do you allow parking on that very street?
To me, that's not a question.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
That's the issue. So what would be better would be coming back to your saying designated as a no parking zone. That would be an easier fix.
Then you might...
Because anything, he can still pull in his garage, and they would have to manufacture it and go from there. Okay, he's only trying to modify his plan.
I don't know, your clients don't know how I live, but then all the time they've lived there, how many times do they have to call in tow trucks, have not been able to access their house?
My client is a doctor.
The current scenario is that's been open since ninety-two at least, we've heard. So how many times have people been unable to access their homes and park there in the last twenty-five years?
Well, let's say during this construction, it's been quite frequent.
Oh, construction, okay. But if your clients were constructing, they'd be bringing up trucks and stuff, they might have the exact same issue.
It could be.
I just, I'm not seeing how your clients aren't able to get to their house. You're not showing.
No, 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 I understand completely. So what you're saying is, since they, under this plan, they couldn't park there. So what do they get to do? Because they can't trespass on what would be Mr. Sky's property.
They're taking, sorry, your clients are losing their parking in this transaction?
Yes.
People, the city's selling their property?
No, the city is selling their access to their property.
But I thought that's why they put the red box in there, so that it's still an ingress and egress.
No, you mean the eight-foot?
Whatever it is.
But you can't turn a car in an eight-foot square.
I don't know that. I don't, I don't have an eight-foot square in front of me and a car.
Okay. What it's suggesting to you is this, if you can't do it, or take, don't take my word for it, ask the staff if they can do it.
I've got a staff that says they should recommend doing this, so they haven't seen a problem with that.
I didn't see in the report the report from the fire department. Was there one of those?
I have no idea.
No, no, there was not.
Okay, so I've heard a couple of issues about the fire, I'm sure, our fire hydrant, by the way, which is sitting on the southwest corner of seventeen F, okay? That's your only public access to that fire hydrant, is right there. That should have been part of your staff report and recommendation.
Those blue cars in front of the hydrant right now, on the picture that we have, is that the Humphreys or someone else?
It's the Humphreys and their truck and everything else. Everything else is there. The Humphreys are on their own property.
So people are already parking and blocking this?
No, you're looking at the photograph. The photograph, look at the truck. The truck is where the road is.
There are, I mean, a couple are with that back form behind that blue car, there's a fire hydrant.
Correct.
So the blue cars are blocking.
Right.
So people are already blocking this hydrant for a long time.
Now, the hydrant is where the telephone pole is. Do you see where that is? The telephone pole is where the hydrant is. The fire trucks won't be able to pull straight back because that's parking there. So now they're going to have to park further out here, and that endangers other people. My question is, why was that not even a question? Why was that not even an issue for the staff report? It should have been something before the decision is made. The other part of this is, remember, if you tell, if you say, okay, well, eight feet, you should be able to get a car in there, maybe you can pull it sideways and it doesn't, you know, if you move sideways, then what?
This portion is ten feet. Remember, it's thirty-two, this is twenty-two, so ten feet.
Right, so ten feet. So my question is this, because that's not obviously the configuration of property now, but just play that game for a minute. That red area, what prevents someone, since the argument is it's historically parking, from parking there?
Couldn't that be made a no parking zone, like you suggested?
That's what I'm trying to get at. So you're actually dealing with what's parking, what's no parking? Right? If you could change things with a no parking zone, then send Mr. Sky back to his house, construct a garage on his own property, and make that area no parking. The whole thing, the blue and the red. That resolves the issue. But if you're suggesting that it makes it harder for my client to get into their area, to their, to their own property, then that's a diminution of value. And that's where the city may be liable. I don't walk into these cases trying to threaten the lawsuits. I'm just saying, that's an issue that may cause loss of value. So when you're talking to realtors about $2.50 to $3.00 a square foot, talk to them about access and where people can park and see if that affects value. That's the difference.
And if I could mention, technically, if you notice this area is my pointer there, this is actually a city-owned parcel. The right-of-way is actually the area, you can see how it's delineated. You see where that, all right, let me get my pointer. There it is. So technically, the right-of-way is all of this area in here. This is a city-owned parcel. So this is technically city-owned parcel. The right-of-way line ends here. This is the dedicated right-of-way. Just to clarify that.
Can I ask a question? So Paul, are you saying that what is being proposed or applied for by Mr. Sky as parking is not considered part of the existing roadway?
This, the norm is, right-of-way doesn't have APN numbers. This is a standalone parcel. This has an assigned parcel number. So when you look at right-of-way, you're generally like, when you click on this, there's not an APN number that's associated with this right-of-way. This has a parcel number that's assigned, it happens to be owned by the city. But technically, if you look at that, that, notice how they delineate where the right-of-way is, technically, these areas all in here, this is all, and believe it or not, Laundrie Hill, this section goes there on here. But this, technically, that right-of-way line comes up to here. This is the standalone parcel with the parcel number. Generally, like you said, you don't see right-of-way with parcel numbers.
Is this why it's not, is this why there's no pavement up there? Because it's a city lot, it's not the actual road? Because I noticed the paving stops before, right before this parcel. There's no paving up to these couple houses we're talking about. And it looks very deliberate, so I'm wondering if that's why they didn't even pave it, because it's not right-of-way, it's just a city lot.
And what I attempted to illustrate here is, that's why I drew this in, to show where the right-of-way line is, where this is flooding up against this parcel. So technically, this is what I'm showing here, is the right-of-way, private property both sides. This is the standalone parcel here. There's the parcel number.
So it's not even currently right-of-way?
No, it's owned by, it's owned by the city.
The city's, but like the people you...
Technically, the right-of-way is basically stopping at this point right here.
Historically, it's a right-of. Historically, it's a right-of.
Well, I didn't think it historically mattered there, because people were saying it doesn't matter. Well, no, you just, you yourself said it doesn't matter who's been parking there before. So one of these other people said, well, the previous person didn't have a car, therefore they weren't parking there.
But I understand your, I understand your criteria by your ordinances is to look at the historic, to look at the ability of what it was.
Well, historically, someone's, we've been told that was used as parking for the very house that we're in conversation about.
Right. It was access for everyone.
Who else needs access to that house?
Well, for at least the last twenty-six years, no one's accessed that property until the scum has.
Okay, well... That area has been used by visitors to houses up there.
I'm sure, I would assume that the Humphreys have had, actually, people come up and visit, and somebody can park anywhere.
Or park.
Right. Yes.
Not necessarily from a Humphrey's.
No, I agree with you.
Fictionary, right?
I visit people in Bisbee, I'm parking wherever I possibly can figure. So, yeah.
I have a question about nineteen F. Is that the Laird property?
Um...
No, that's not, it appears, you know, what...
Yeah, yeah, I believe that is.
Nineteen F. Actually, that picture might...
I'm sorry, stop. Go ahead.
No, four thirty-one B is our one.
Okay.
Nineteen F is what the Humphreys saw.
So in that picture right there, if you can hold on to that picture, there is a car parked, I guess, no, the white car on nineteen F.
So it had a park.
Yeah. That little portion of the private property that juts out into the right-of-way. Looks like it's historically cost over and used for parking there.
And that's happening in front of the Laird garage, by the way?
Definitely.
I think we're asking, we're looking at dates, how long is this?
That's from September of 2008.
Okay. So currently, and I think I'm just trying to address what you were saying, is four thirty-one B and nineteen, well, nineteen F is, now, that's a driveway to a garage. Okay, so the property in front of nineteen F would be the garage.
Four thirty-one B is a garage.
I think the garage is right here, isn't it?
Yes.
Right there. Well, that's there.
It's our apartment.
Yes, far away.
Yes, that's correct.
Martin, Martin, if you look at this picture, there's, the parking for nineteen F would be right here.
Okay.
And it's on that piece of dirt. So basically, nineteen F has to, like, park on the dirt, so they're parked like this.
Their property line goes up the highway.
And by that picture, it looks like seventeen F modified their house from the previous pictures to enhance their parking from what it was.
Yeah, that was constructed by Mr. Sky.
What's that?
That was constructed by Mr. Sky on behalf of the Humphreys, who hired him to do it.
So it looks like the parking was actually improved.
For the Humphreys.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yes. But it's really noshed into that corner now. That's why you can't make a turn.
So that contradicts the idea that they don't, they would not have good parking access.
How do they get there?
Are you, is everyone assuming that this man's going to construct a garage on this property? Is that, because otherwise, if it's wide open, they're going to do something well and they're going to squeeze in and park.
Okay, so you're squeezing in and park. But now you're taking away a public property access for my clients to get into their property.
But they've been benefiting from the same public access. How's it been?
But then you're taking away.
How?
How? The same argument that you can't make a turn, a ten-foot turn, but no one's saying you can't. You're saying you can't. Right.
I mean, I make sure somebody's busy, throws all the time, and most people live here too. And you're, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't get that it's rather, you know what it is, you're coming to start threatening us lawsuits.
I have a threat that you're not getting to.
I think maybe...
You can agree.
Well, no, it's just the way you approach it.
This is evolving into an argument I prefer to move on, and then we can have a mission discussion after the rest of the public hearing. Do you, done?
Hold it, if you have any questions, may I be to talk to you? Thanks.
All righty.
Thank you.
Next person on the list is Helen Ingram.
Well, I'm the only one old enough to remember sort of what Laundrie Hill looked like in that picture.
Please, start with, tell me, hold on.
I was just saying that I'm the only one old enough to have actually seen that picture just as it is now. I, we bought our house in nineteen ninety-two, and it had a one-shackled garage, which is just on the backside here. A woman named Mrs. Kendrick had the little shack at the end, which is an historic house, nineteen oh six. And she did not have a car and never parked there throughout that whole time. I remember when Rodney Smith decided to, what he called rationalize the parking, and he gave Helen Davis, who then lived in that green space, some parking space, in exchange for something. And it was not a matter of a woman not being willing to negotiate, she was frankly cut out. There was never any parking there. There were people parking there because Laundrie Hill is very tight and people park everywhere all the time. When I first came and met Mr. Sky, he had his truck parked in front of my garage, which I couldn't get into. It's really difficult, our situation. And I have paid taxes for twenty-five years on my property, and I didn't know you'd be getting tax relief for an old property, so I paid the whole amount. And now I have to think about how I'm going to back out of our garage without running into the back end of somebody in order to go up the hill. I now have to worry about what if there is a fire, how is the fire truck going to get down there? And it's really important that it get down to the end of that blue line in order to reach the access. We have an abandoned house below us, it's just waiting for a fire. So for reasons of emergency vehicles coming, old people are sick, for reasons of convenience of long-term residents in historic houses, uh, this is a problem imposed by a property owner who built an inappropriate, too large house in that space, and he is externalizing all that cost on other residents. My enjoyment on my property is declined, and if you sell that property to him for nickels, it will decline further.
Excuse me, I, I'm not sure which property it is that you own, so.
Okay, uh, if this were back a little bit.
Oh, put the area on.
Yeah, please. Okay, um.
I think this is your home back here, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Can you show us the garage, please?
Uh, the garage, that's the garage, right there. All right, you see, in order to get out of that garage, I have to go around Janet's car, that's her house, and I think there's a car parked there, and it's very difficult to swing there. You get somebody else parked there, and they come up a little bit, and there's big drop-offs. The thing you can't see is there's a substantial drop-off, it's really hard to back up there. I've had trouble, you know, you have to quickly move your foot from the clutch to the brake because you've got to zip out of there because it's up a hill, it's really tight. And, uh, you know, maybe, public property ought to be a public service, it's an imposition to make it more difficult for people who already have a parking problem worse. There's no, what is the right of someone from the outside imposing this problem on us? I just don't get it.
Who's from the outside?
We have owned that property since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
That property was sold, I don't know, John, when did you buy your property? Less than four years ago?
Okay.
Three years? All right. That property never caused a moment's trouble to anybody, people didn't like how it looked, but that's anybody's business. Now that property causes constant problems for it. Way more traffic, way more business, this is meant for a commercial building, it's clear, it's got two receptacles, there's no internal stairway, that is intended for commercial use. What is my life going to be like trying to get into my garage when people park right in front of my garage? And they'll now want to do it more. We are creating a real problem into the future, and I think some danger to the city, because if my house burns down, I'm going to say the record shows I said the fire truck can't get in there. If the ambulance can't get in it, you have to drag people upstairs, uh, that's, that's a problem. And you're creating it by ceding what ought to be public property to somebody else, probably there should never have been that many houses to begin with, now we really have a problem.
One last question, just real quick, because I, I guess, you're saying, so, from looking at all the maps and from looking at the area, from my Google Maps, this looks like it's the end of the road, his house is the end of the road.
Right, but it, it doesn't show how that big, steep incline.
No, I didn't know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it, that's not, just my question.
Okay.
So he's currently, he's at the very end of the road.
Right.
Okay. How have fire, I mean, I guess, I'm just trying, and you're painting these great pictures, but how's the fire and ambulance been getting up there now? They've been going up there?
Well, they come in there and they park right where that red and blue is.
Okay.
But now they won't be able to do that, they'll have to.
It'll be parked twenty feet out.
Yeah, and, and they're going to have to run the fire proposal all over there, they're going to have to win their way through those, uh, parked cars, up and downstairs, narrow place, it's really a very crowded, uh, you know, there isn't any space there, there really isn't any space there. So to, to create yet a further problem is an imposition, a terrible imposition on somebody who's been a good taxpayer and citizen and followed all the rules for twenty-five years.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final person on this is Todd Conklin.
How are you doing? My name's Todd Conklin, residence of five oh one B Bailey Hill, so stone's throw from this house. So put on the area, map, please, Paul. All right, so right below the Lairds, the, uh, the Latvian Building, ready to burn down, that was originally my childhood home in nineteen eighty, I was one years old when my mom moved me there. Nicholas of Ohr would not sell the house to my mom. Our neighbors, which was the Lairds' house, now was, uh, uh, it was what, uh, Port Keastrop, he owned that house. So my whole life, my mom would come, park up there, drop off all the groceries, and she'd go find another spot, because we didn't have a parking there. Well, Nicholas would not sell the house, so what ended up happening is I, my mom bought the house right below Bunnings in nineteen eighty-one. Anyways, uh, as I can recollect from being like seven, eight, nine years old and on, there was a man named Tommy Bellin, and Tommy Bellin lived in John Sky's house that he bought. Well, where Tommy Bellin parked was right in front of this house. So, I mean, I haven't been fortunate with parking in both of my houses, unfortunately, but that house always had parking. I don't, and for record, I've been on that hill for thirty-nine years.
Okay.
Seriously, my mom, Nancy Chikate, bought that house thirty-nine years ago. Well, thirty-seven she bought her own, but the other guy wouldn't sell, so I've been there a long time. Um, does anybody have any questions on it?
I think we're just.
All right.
Right, um, I'd like to give an opportunity for anyone who has not spoken to speak that may be not be on this list, otherwise the, um, public hearing and public testimony will be closed. We, is the, oh, I'm sorry, no, John is the other.
Could I just say one more thing?
John, the applicant does have an opportunity to respond to the testimony.
All right, I'll make you clear. I just, uh, John Sky applicant, I just wanted to go over some things that were addressed. Uh, the first is, is, uh, the, it's a turnaround, it wasn't used as a turnaround, uh, I backed my truck up right there, a full-size truck, I turned, where you turn around, you want to, uh, turn it back to the original view? Well, you come up and you turn around way up the hill and then you go. So no one ever turns around right there, you'll never, ever see anyone turn around. I can turn around there, most people don't do it. Um, the other thing is, uh, the fire chief, because I've had a lot of complaints from the neighbors, uh, the fire chief came up, uh, he addressed the fire issue, um, his reply was that the hydrant was closer to the Humphreys' residence than mine. The hydrant is fourteen foot, six inches from my house, or, and then it's seven feet from the, from the Humphreys. And then they said that if there was in fact going, if there was a fire there or an emergency, that the Humphreys' vehicle would be the vehicle that would be in the way, not the vehicle in the center. And I stood and watched them tell them that, so I don't know why they're bringing that up. And then, uh, the truck that he showed you in the video is twenty-six feet long. So that should give you a pretty good idea, standard vehicle is, I don't know, ten, eleven feet, I know my, I know my full-size red pickup truck is nineteen feet long. So, and, uh, let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, my property? There's no way. What I did is I cleaned up the property line, uh, Mr. Smith, Rodney Smith, who I believe you've read an email from him stating that he would like me to get the property, he's the one that's been obsessed with parking up there for the last thirty years, um, he sold me my backyard, he actually owned half of the existing house there. So, uh, the whole, the whole lot is forty-nine feet long total, so there, there just wouldn't be room to build parking garages or anything like that. But other than that, uh, that's it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how close is your new construction to that red line at the north end of the blue parcel?
Um, let's see, the new construction is about that where the shed was there, so, uh, let's see, if that's, let's see, that would be twenty-two, was, about twenty-nine feet from, that's where my house is. The end of the house to the, the top of that red line towards the house is about twenty-nine feet.
Okay. Then that's. Could you park on that property? Your property?
Could I park on my property?
If you had access to your property, guaranteed access to your property, is there enough room between your house and that public, uh, city-owned property for you to park your vehicle?
Are you talking about, uh, previous to me building in the building?
Today, new construction.
Could I, oh, could I park?
Could you park on your own property?
No.
If you had to.
Absolutely not.
And why not?
Uh, there, just no space.
Okay, I just understood you to say that there was twenty-nine feet.
You're saying from the red box?
No, no.
Oh, I'm.
From the edge of the blue.
Oh, the edge of the blue, that's, that's six and a half.
Six and a half feet, okay.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, so there's additional six and a half feet, we're just going to where the pointer is now, there's another six and a half feet that you could pull in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I, I generally pull all the way up. So, I mean, we left, we left.
So even with the new, new construction that is, that was built out, right?
Yes.
There's space that still remains on that portion of your lot that you own, which is approximately six and a half feet?
Yeah, but you could only pull up to about three feet passively.
So there's only about three usable feet that are left?
Yes.
Okay, because I think that's what you were trying to.
Yes, so if I pulled my full-size truck in there, uh, that would leave them about fourteen feet to pull into their drive, that's my full-size Chevy Silverado. Because we, what happened is we went up there and we tried to make it make sense and make it fair so they could still get in, and nothing's going to get built, mind you. So, uh, their property is literally thirty, what was it, thirty-two feet long? So, uh, there's, there's plenty of room to get in there, and they park there all the time, they were parking right next to that G M C when it was parked there, too. I wish I would have brought a picture of that, because their truck was right there.
That's it. See that picture there?
Do you see a gray Jeep that is parked next to the G M C?
No, it's a camper.
Uh, on the other side, let me do that. All right, so this is a, this is a full-size two-and-a-half-ton, uh, G M C mining truck. Uh, I believe it's ten feet wide, and you can see the neighbor, this is Eddie, this is, uh, the lady that's living there now, you can see she's parked in there just fine in her Toyota Corolla. So, thanks for bringing that. Um, yeah, so that's great, it shows that, see this, the black car is a Humphreys parking space, and that's where the lady that lives there parks, no matter, and that's, remember, that's a twenty-six-foot-long truck. So obviously, my nineteen-foot truck is going to egress a lot more, and that's pretty much the biggest full-size truck that you, I mean, it's not a long bed, but.
Any, any more questions for Mr. Sky?
Yeah, I have a question, John.
Yes, sir.
There was someone that I forget, but they said that you did not obtain a site map, a site plan, exactly that.
A site plan?
Oh.
Yes, Mr. Sky never submitted a site plan that included.
Oh, I haven't.
A site plan.
I ain't that person.
Now, the self-hearing is closed, so we'll try to finish this quickly.
Um, I provided, uh, all permits, plans, et cetera, needed to, uh, build my house legally on four twenty-nine D on Laundrie Hill. So, um, I, if you guys want me to start ruffling through my briefcase, I've got tons of stuff.
So you're saying you did submit one?
I submitted everything that I needed to do to legally build my house on four twenty-nine D Laundrie Hill, yes.
And my, my other question is, if you did not build out, if you did not build out this way, right, north, I guess, would you have had an opportunity to park? So say you started your house where the existing houses just right down that photo, from that, from that house, where the lanterns are, where that, where that structure was, to the start of the red line?
Sure, if I knocked down the cement wall, cut out the trees, and parked in the, the yard, I suppose I could have.
You could have.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, but who parks a car in their yard? You know, that's not going to happen, not when there's a city, not when there's city parking. Like, in the end of it all, I'm going to park there. I mean, it's just, I'm just offering a bio, and I thought that that was a fair thing to do, since, uh, everyone on the whole hill owns their own parking, let's not forget that, everyone. There's not one house up there that does not own their own parking, I'm the only house, that's it. And then some people have parking garages, and they're upset because I want to have a dirt, a piece of dirt that I could park my car in.
And, and that, and that, to say that it would have gone differently, would you have been able to park one or multiple cars?
I, I suppose if I would have took down the house, I probably could have parked like twelve cars on that lot, if I would have just left it.
Not the house, I just say where the, where the beginning, where the house starts and coming out this way towards the blue portion.
Would I be able to park, park multiple cars in a row?
Uh, or side by side.
Uh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, we, uh, while I've been in the construction process, you have a picture here that shows a full-size camper trailer, uh, on site here, a, a full-size truck and a car and materials in between. So, yeah, it's reasonable to say that we could park four cars in there if we all got along and, and we all, you know, worked together to park like that, which was my original intention. And don't forget that, uh, originally, the Humphreys sent a letter stating that they felt like it was a good idea for me to get the parking, and, and, uh, Smith also, they changed their mind, but that's because we were all, we were all talking about getting together on doing covered parking there, and that was their idea, and, you know, I'm, I'm just a servant, so I, I'll build whatever, it doesn't matter.
I just, I guess I need to clarify something based on this exchange.
Yes.
Are you saying, were you asking if now, um, was the current construction allowed to park onto this property?
I was asking if it was, if, if you could go back in time, and, and I'm saying not, you know, before the house was built out.
Yes.
To the north, could John have parked cars, not one in back of one another, but sideways where that blue portion was going across? But now you're saying it's too late because your house is actually built out this way?
No, 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 the, no, the house is not built into that blue section.
The house is built to the end of where that.
Yeah, like where that tree is, like, pretty much, you see that shed there?
Yeah.
It's kind of like there, you see the end of that wall there?
Right.
There was a wall there that kind of crumbled and decayed, well, that was like the property line, kind of.
Okay.
Except for it wasn't the property line, because Rodney Smith owned that property and he owned half of that. Except for it wasn't the property line, because Rodney Smith owned that property, and he owned half of that house. So, you know, Rodney wanted some other property in the front. We, you know, basically, he had been, when I met him years ago, he wanted to clean up the, all the property lines up there. He's real finicky about it, 'cause everything was built on top of everything, and he wanted to, to make sure that the parking got dealt with, uh, because he, he actually rallied with all the neighbors to make sure everybody had parking, like I said, but they couldn't, they couldn't, they didn't bring Kit in because she was mentally ill. So that's the only reason, and I wish he would've wrote that in his email, but... Do you guys remember the email that, did you read the email that Rodney sent you? Alright, so, yeah, he, pretty much, there's not much more to say, I'm, I'm just getting started now.
Alright, then we will move on. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Sparsa. We will, uh, now is the time for permission to discuss things among ourselves. Anybody want to start?
I was concerned that the fire issue had not been addressed on account by the city, but, uh, from what I've heard, the fire chief was up there and did assess the situation. And made a recommendation. Is, do you know if that's true, Paul?
I understand that during the course, there was, yeah, there was interaction with the, with the fire chief. Did I have it? No, but I understand that there was.
Okay, that would give me some concern, but.
Mr. Sparsa, do you think that the previous home works director would have communicated with the fire department? Or you don't know where you're from?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I, when I spoke to Eddie, but I know, I know it's come up in, in life of the recent construction that, um, certainly I know they've engaged with the fire, the fire department because of that, huh?
I'm a sure way to know, from the fire chief or from some responsible party representing the fire department, what the situation was when that issue was addressed and what their organization was.
Any other comments and discussion?
I know the area very well, I've walked it many times, I'm familiar with the houses that are there, Seventeen and Nineteenth. Um, I remember John's purchase, when I was studying. A lot of what everyone has said is pretty valid, I mean, it's, it is tight up there. I can understand, um, the reasons.
But isn't it gonna still be tight whether he owns that little piece of dirt or not? The tightness is gonna be there no matter what. We're not, no one's alleviating the tightness. I mean, he's gonna park up there whether he owns the lot or not. I don't think the city's gonna come in and confuse the parking, 'cause it's a city lot now. I mean, I know, I guess that's where I'm trying to get my head around, is he's, he and or the neighbors, and or the guests, and or the fire department, and or everyone else under the sun is still gonna use that space and park there. And it sounds like, unless someone is making it up, at one point, someone took an interest enough at some point in the last number of decades to try and either create or make sure what had parking up there was at this one house. And I don't know, I can't attest whether or not the previous occupant had mental issues and that's why they didn't get involved in, or if it was too famous to answer the door or what, but... I mean, I just don't, I, I mean, it seems to be untypical of all the little streets we drive on here, it's just, you know, it's gonna be the same whether he owns that dirt or not, the same activity's gonna be going up there. It's just I'm assuming he'll feel, or he'll have some claim to say, please, your guests can't park in my spot, or at home or something. Your jesters can be there, and I won't be decided, it's not gonna change. Fire, fire trucks are still gonna have a challenge up there no matter what happened. I assume that a fire company like ours is going to either be able to string a hose over there or they're gonna move with the fire department if they deem it's necessary, and the city will, the fire department will, like they probably would initially.
Well, I agree with, I agree with everything that you've said. I wanna add to that, that there are little walls up there, these little drawings are nice, but they don't, there are no brick walls out, uh, surrounding that red area, there are no brick walls surrounding the blue area. And I'm sure the people up there are constantly driving over each other's property to get in and out of their properties. And they're not bickering and arguing about crossing lines here and there because it's my property, not your property. And if, if this were allowed to go through, that situation would continue to exist. The blue Toyota would use as much of that red space as it needs to get out, and it would use as much of the blue space or the pavement surrounding those two areas to make its turns and negotiate its ingress and egress, as would the Smith, the person using Smith's property and everything else. The argument has been presented that everybody up on that hill owns their own parking space except for the Skyrisers. And I see no reason why they can't own, or shouldn't own, their own parcel for parking.
I, I agree too, uh, with both Brian and Louis here, that, um, you know, it's just a matter of who owns that blue portion. And if that control is under John's ownership, then, um, he, you know, he would have more of a say on not being landlocked and having, um, you know, enough property for him to park his vehicles himself, so... I, I agree with Louis on the same argument.
Well, we have some options here, I, I tend to, um, agree with both Louis and Martin Ryan. Historically, there's been parking there, and one of the criteria is, is this a logical place for parking for this site and its contiguous? I'm not sure that the fire hydrant issue will be improved or not improved, because this piece of property was not, um, was not sold to Mr. Sparsa, the piece of property is still available for parking, we're wanting to park there. We have some choices here, we can, we have a motion we can make that, um, we believe we make a motions in the affirmative, and then we vote it up or down. We also would make a motion to table, if there's a concern about the, how fire hydrant is sufficient, that we feel like we need to hear directly from the fire department, so.
I think that would be a safe thing to do, a reasonable thing to do. I should look like the evidence, I suppose.
Are you prepared for the motion?
I, I, I would make a, I guess I'll go around, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move with the planning and zoning commission and the mayor and city council to transfer a fifteen-by-twenty-two-foot-long portion of city parcel APN 103-61-179A to the applicant for appropriate consideration for the next quarter. A second.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote, um, starting with Mr. Sparsa.
I'm gonna vote today.
Mr. Sparsa?
Hi.
Um, Nancy?
I'm really proud. With everything I've heard. I'm gonna vote my way out. I need more information, so I'm gonna send one, I need more information.
Mr. Keith?
Aye.
Chair vote size?
Seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
And I'm gonna abstain, because I also serve the D R B, since it's been brought up as a concern, so some complications to this.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to overlook you, I just.
I did, of course.
Chair vote size, so if the recommendation to forward it to the city council with a positive recommendation has been made, and you will have another opportunity to express your concerns, and, um, any questions you have to the, um, to, not, to the city council. So did you get the vote, Mr. Sparsa?
Yes.
Yeah, it was three to two, and the day votes were.
Abstentional.
Alright, thank you, thank you for your, um, comments, for your time.
Hey, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, we're, we're still doing this, you guys take your.
Oh, sorry, look at me, oh, sorry, guys. Take it easy.
The agenda I don't know, too, is a discussion of possible actions, definitely, Bisbee's own code over states mandated by state statutes, review of accessory, living quarters, and parking, that's a list.
Uh, yeah, that, that's.
That's why you're here.
That's why I'm here, I wonder why I was hanging out back. Uh, so I'm, I'm here for the half of you that don't know me. Uh, I'm one of the Bisbee planning staff who actually lives in, or the county planning staff who actually lives in Bisbee. Uh, I have lived in all three neighborhoods, so part, one of the reasons I've got, I've got this task. Uh, as I understand it, it started from a request from Mr. Sparsa to take a look at the accessory living quarters, which are mentioned once in the zoning regulations, is permitted on all residential properties and never mentioned or explained or, uh, any process anywhere else, so... Then it kinda snowballed from, well, we should maybe take a look at reorganization of, of the regs, which I'm gonna suggest comes last after the also the Greenon, 'cause that's the easy part. Uh, parking, I've heard, we wanna take another look at. I don't know why that might be an issue, but we might wanna take a look at parking. Uh, there's also a number of other issues that staff knows need to be addressed because there's been multiple changes to state law pertaining to zoning issues over the last couple of years. Uh, albeit some of mine I'm more familiar with than others, because some of the city applicable ones I didn't pay quite as much attention to. Um, the ones off the top of my head that the state has caused a lot of deregulation of, that our zoning regulations will have to match, are food trucks. Uh, those I'm not incredibly up on, so I need to read the law a little more, but we do need to put some provisions in there on how they're regulated. Home occupations, I notice I've had to deal with this one with the county regs, they've been deregulated several times. That, uh, the city's regulations will need to catch up with those, with those deregulations. And I think those I can talk about in pretty solid detail if you have questions right now. Uh, short-term rentals, I believe the cities are following the new law, but it should probably be clarified in law that we cannot regulate short-term rentals from a zoning perspective any differently than any other single-family residence. Uh, the other one I'm not hugely familiar with and need to get a little more intimately familiar with is just in this last session, there's been some legislation requiring cities to permit small wireless communications equipment in public right from. Uh, and so if somebody came right now and kind of shrugged our shoulders or said, no, you can't do that, we're facing like a plastic bag lawsuit, so we wanna get that cleaned up or at least have it in, in the works. Um, I've gotta use a couple, a couple, little more reading of the last couple of years of legislative updates to see whether or not there's anything else we missed. Um, but really, I'm here, if there's any questions on any of those right now, or if there's any other items that this body would like to see addressed.
Could you expand on the, uh, state regs that limit or prohibit regulation of short-term rental? And the reason I ask is, you know, we've had a number of issues come before us already. We've been, I wouldn't say admonished, but guided, I think, through city, through the mayor and, uh, city staff that we can't go down a path of looking at that. However, we're dealing with ancillary effects in many neighborhoods in Old Bisbee, particularly having to do with parking. Uh, and if it's just the regulation of the short-term rental, that's great, because another legal law is, uh, not open-ended, but closed. So then we'd be able to at least deal with the ancillary issue of parking? Because that's gotta continue to be a problem in Old Bisbee if we don't deal with it in some way.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, the answer is, what the law says is that a jurisdiction cannot require any permanent license or any other zoning requirement any different than any other single-family home. So if you don't require extra parking for a single-family home, that I'm gonna build a house and I'm gonna live in, and that doesn't require any other type of extra parking, then we cannot do, we cannot treat a short-term rental any different. Um, and that's, you have places like Old Bisbee that can really bite people, where we've got situations like Andre Hill, where there may not be enough parking for homes, and now you start bringing in multiple cars for a short-term rental, there's no actual legal way for us to regulate that.
So, uh, but if we had a place, let's say, for example, a parking permit, a neighborhood parking permit issuance, so neighbors, uh, pay for a parking permit to park in the neighborhood that didn't have dedicated parking, didn't own their own parking, uh, that would not be, as treating, uh, the short-term rentals from the regular rentals or owner.
That is correct, because that's not dealing directly with the permit in the home. If parking is a separate issue and everybody's gotta buy a parking permit, then, yeah, you could absolutely, absolutely do that. But a lot of, like, the county used to treat bed and breakfasts, any sort of short-term rental, would at least require, usually at least a neighborhood notification permit, if not a full special use authorization. We can't do that anymore.
So you're not speaking just about Airbnbs or vacation rooms, you're actually talking about bed, bed and breakfasts?
Anything that's a short-term rental of any portion of a single-family residence or anything up to, I believe it's six contiguous units. Yeah, that, this, this was rather contentious in the state legislature. Um, it did pass, it was actually, the greatest opposition came from the wealthy cities, the representative from, uh, from Fountain Hills, it crusaded every year to get this wiped out because some of these cities are concerned. I can go in, if there's something, I have a magical amount of money, buy a block in Fountain Hills and turn it into spring-grade central, and there's absolutely nothing the city can do about it outside. You know, he's complaints and things like that, that they can't require, there, there's no way they can keep the short-term rentals out.
Now, that would be different, if it was a commercial-type building or a non-residential type, like a schoolhouse in?
Yes, it's tied specifically to single-family residences or condos.
So, so if it's for ALQs then?
That's the other really not our question that we've just not brought up. Uh, current county regulations say you cannot rent in accessory living quarters separate from the main dwelling. We do permit it long-term with a, uh, special use authorization, which is happening once in five years. But, if you accept the premise that that accessory living quarter is a single-family residence, then there's, we cannot, if we allow accessory living quarters, we have to allow them to Airbnb.
But you can, can you limit the number of ALQs you have on property?
Yes.
So six of them?
Yeah, I mean.
You could, you could prohibit six ALQs?
I would suggest that the county permits one ALQ, one property, period. Um, and there's a process to get, what we don't do, and this was after a long heartbreaking discussion, is our, the way the county handles accessory living quarters, I know a couple of you probably did more than a few of these in your day, but for those who don't know, we notify neighbors within three hundred feet, and they essentially have veto authority. Nobody vetoes it, you get through, you get your, you get your accessory living quarters. We don't tell people in that letter, and frankly, we don't tell applicants, that if they get this, they can be, be immediately. Uh, if somebody said that's what they were going to do, I imagine the neighbors would, would push back and say, no, they, they can do that. But this is an issue, it's untested law, and kinda nobody wants to be the first, so we just don't tell people that you could do it, and nobody's asked. There's potential legal argument that accessory living quarters is not a single-family residence and therefore not Airbnb, but I would wanna be one to, to test that.
but I would wanna be one to, to test that.
Most of them have a full kitchen and...
Yes.
Separate meter.
Separate, separate, and that's one way that you can, it does really help for short-term rentals, the, this not having a separate meter again, the, and these are, the county regulations, they place for you to start, there's some things I do not port over to, to the city, or not suggest porting over to the city. We do not allow a separate meter without a separate, without being a rural property or with a special use. Um, in the city properties, I would recommend just no separate meters, period. Or, okay, especially used, trying to get a separate meter. Once you get a separate meter, it's easy to rent, to rent long-term, because you've got, have different people paying utility bills. But I would think with, with Airbnb, I wouldn't care so much to whether it's got a separate meter, or it's just, I don't mind being housed here.
And what are the restrictions that were taken away from, de-regulated from home occupation?
Um, the biggest, most offensive one is that we cannot, jurisdictions cannot prohibit sales or rentals of goods as the primary purpose of a home occupation. The county had to remove that language, it's still in the city. You cannot deny commercial improvements to residential property with a home occupation, permit wise, they want commercial doors. Okay, we have to issue them building permits for this?
Even in historic district?
With the historic district, you may be able to trump that, because the historic district regulations are still going to apply. It doesn't interact with those, it doesn't, it doesn't overrule those, but say, I, I live here in San Jose, I live right around the corner. I could understand law, uh, I don't remember offhand if, if there's a maximum percentage of the home that can be used for the home occupation in the city, in the county, it's twenty-five, let's pretend it's twenty-five. I can turn twenty-five percent of my home into a convenience store with full automated doors, I have to come and get a permit for it, and the city cannot reject it. As long as I'm not causing on-street parking or traffic congestion. If there's room to park on the property, um, you can have...